Good evening. I'd like to call the village council meeting on Monday, September 26, 2022. Will the clerk please call the call?
Commissioner Wade?
Here.
Commissioner Polk?
Present.
Commissioner Loomis Walters? Commissioner Reed? Mayor Murray?
Here.
Thank you. Let's all stand after the pleasure of being here.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good call. Again, your packets this evening, and after the minutes from our previous council meeting on September 12, any questions or comments? If not, I would seek motion to approve the minutes from the September 12 meeting this time.
Motion?
Second?
Hearing a motion, second, will the clerk please call the call?
Commissioner Wade?
Yes.
Commissioner Polk?
Yep.
Yes, and motion carries. Consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda are routinely brought forward. If there are sections or board of commissioners, they will be enacted on motion. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. Item A, to approve the Payless Professional Firefighters' Raffle License and Raffle Manager Bond and Waiver Request for a Raffle Appeal on Friday, November 11, 2022, at the Payless Fire Station Number Two. And B, to approve payment of invoices on the warrant list dated September 26, 2022, in the amount of $140,281.35. Do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion?
Second?
Hearing a motion and a second, will the clerk please call the call?
Commissioner Wade?
Yes.
Commissioner Polk?
Yes.
Yes, motion carries. We had some old business we thought before the council this time. We're going to move to the Building and Public Property Report. Commissioner Wade?
Thanks, Mayor. Okay, I do have three things tonight. First, auto home maintenance, as the leaves change and the days get shorter. Take this time, take the time this summer to prepare for incoming cold weather. Change furnace filters, schedule a chimney sweep, replace batteries in the smoke detector, test emergency backup generators, inspect and clean gutters, and rake leaves and disconnect garden hoses. In terms of permits, the building department processed 24 permits from September 7th to September 21, resulting in $10,329.08 in permit fees. Movement right along. Another agenda matter I have tonight is a referral to the Plan Commission to hold a public hearing regarding the potential text amendments to the village zoning regulations as it pertains to authorized variances for location of accessory structures, including swimming pools. Little background, recently the village staff has been contacted by a property owner regarding the construction of a new swimming pool on the property. Due to the characteristics of the lot, as well as the location of the existing proposed improvements on the lot, the location of the proposed new swimming pool would not comply with code. It may be reasonable for the property owner to pursue a variance. However, Section 1264.04 of the code limits, of the code limits the type of, the type and extent of variances that are allowed to be authorized by the village. The items listed in the Section 1264.04 does not allow for a variance request to be considered as it pertains to location accessory structures or swimming pools. Please note that the code has been amended in November of 2020 to allow variance requests regarding accessory buildings to be located beyond the front building line of the principal building. The staff does recommend, therefore I move to refer the matter of a potential text amendment to Section 1264.04 of the Village Code regarding authorized variances to the Plan Commission for a public hearing and recommendation to the village council.
Any questions regarding this? Howard, does this, I'm assuming that the referral to the Plan Commission does not require for votes?
It does not.
Questions, comments from any of the members of the council on this? So again, if we vote yes on this, there will be a Plan Commission for review and public hearing. No questions, I would seek a motion. Are you ready to motion?
Would you like a second? Second?
Hearing a motion and a second, will the clerk please come?
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Commissioner Polk?
Yes.
Yes, motion carries. Thank you.
Smiley. Finally, an application has been filed by Wu and Tran, Payless Park LLC, requesting approval of the following. A modification to an approval, to an improved commercial plan development in the B1 Limiteded Retail Business District pursuant to Chapter 1274.05 with the following site development allowances. Waiver of Section 1282.09 to reduce the setback on the north property line to four feet nine inches. Waiver of Sections 1282.09, G1461, G3, and 4 to remove the requirement of landscape offering burn. Waiver of Section 1461.01, G Section 2 to remove the requirement for landscape islands at the ends of certain parking roads. And finally, commercial construction and landscape review pursuant to Chapter 1461. These requests are being made to allow for the expansion of the existing parking lot on the property, commonly known as 12300 South of Grange Road in Payless Park. Little bit of background, on September 15, there was a Plan Commission public hearing. After a brief presentation, some questions from the Plan Commission. The Commission opened up the meetings to comments for the, from the public. Seven individuals provided comments regarding the project. Generally, concerns and questions about the proposal included the following topics. Stormwater, retaining wall, lighting, tree removal, location and distance, parking demand, snow removal location, traffic at the corner of La Grange and 123rd. Process, and one neighbor did speak to note Mr. Wu had done everything, you know, asked of him. The Plan Commission did deny the request, four to nothing on that. This, I am bringing just a revised plan. This is not a hearing. Okay, the hearing will go back to the Plan Commission. But based on the comments from the public and the Plan Commission, the applicant is in the process of revise, of revising the plans in order to address the concerns expressed in the Plan Commission public hearing. A full set of revised plans have not been submitted, but the applicant has submitted a revised site plan, conceptual rendering, and elevations for the retaining wall. We do have some representatives here tonight, if you guys want to take some, some time to explain the process a little bit.
Just want to make people, folks who are standing in the audience, that again, this is not a public hearing. That the applicant is making a brief presentation, and it's the revised plans. These plans, what we're voting on tonight, what's on the agenda, is the referral of those plans back to, of the revised plans back to the Plan Commission for another public hearing. So there'll be another.
Opportunity.
Yeah, opportunity is where I was looking for it, but struggling might lead to finding.
Yes, sir.
I appreciate that. Another opportunity to, for the public to comment on. Now, that being said, when you're in Payless Park, you never want to say to people, "You can't comment on us." I would ask, just as I'm going to ask the applicant to make these comments briefly, because we are going through this process in a public hearing, that if you have something to say after the applicant makes a presentation, then you keep agreeing. Because again, we won't be going to a public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, and we appreciate you hearing a proposal tonight for the expansion of the parking lot. My name is Marsha Owens. I'm the attorney for the applicant with the firm of Hoddington, L.L.A., in Chicago. And I just want to introduce the folks we do have in the room tonight. The owner, Michael Wu, I'm sure many of you know him. The architect, Scott Schalbus with Architectural Studio. The engineer and surveyor, Mike Rogina with Rogina Engineers and Surveyors. And the traffic engineer, Chris Hutchinson, with Sierra Engineering. We also have an ecological consultant we're working with on this project, and he could not be here tonight. So just for a little background to kind of set the stage, the purpose of our presentation is to request to change the commercial plan needed development to allow a development of a parking lot with 82 additional spaces. We're making no request to change the zoning. The zoning is already B1 Limiteded Retail Business District for the parcel on which the expanded parking lot will be located. And you just noted that the compliments of the plan included this property for commercial development in La Grange Road corridor, specifically citing that commercial development should include adequate and convenient parking. This is kind of an overall layout of the site. As it sits today, the blue area is where the current restaurant and parking lot has been constructed. This area that's striped is the area for the proposed parking lot. And then this additional hatch line is an additional residential lot that is owned by Wu and Tran. Nothing is being proposed to be built on that lot. There also sits to the east of the residential lot, a 50-foot strip of land that's owned by Fitzroy Farm, to give them access to McCarthy Road before reaching the next neighbor to the east. This is a copy of the updated site plan, kind of walking you through that. It's been modified to the extent that we can address comments that we heard at the Plan Commission. We've done that. So the additional parking field, again, is this area here. This entrance off of McCarthy is already constructed, curves into the Wu's House from this direction. So it's the additional space here that's currently a detention pond, if you've been to the site. The proposal we presented at the Plan Commission allowed for 93 additional spaces. We have now reduced this down to 82 additional parking spaces, reducing the parking field by 12 spaces. This allows for 76 spaces in this area, and there's an additional six spaces that have been proposed up closer to the restaurant. Also, in addition to the changes, we have moved the setback off the north line. This is the north line. The farm is on the other side of the boundary. We've moved the parking spaces back to be within the setback. So the variance here is just for the retaining wall. And the retaining wall, we'll have some additional photos further in the presentation. But these curved lines show that the retaining wall has now been designed in kind of a stepped fashion, so that it won't be a solid wall. It's going to be broken up with some additional landscaping, and we'll have a better rendering of that as we get into the presentation. There was an additional walkway that was added based on comments we heard the Plan Commission. So the pedestrian is coming from this parking lot to not have to cross through the same driveway as the cars. And an additional landscape island was added in this corner, again taking out a couple of parking spaces, but allowing us to get rid of one of the variances that we have requested. This just reflects the comments that I just went through with respect to the site plan. So the three variances that we had originally requested with our application, request for variance from the rear setback. We're now modifying that to allow a seven-foot, six-and-a-half-inch setback to the nearest portion of the retaining wall at the north end. The setback is now only to the retaining wall. The parking spaces have been further stopped, so it's to be within the setback required by code. The second is a request for a waiver of the landscape buffer and burn. Sorry, this is allowing too much technology. This is allowing the eastern side. This is one variance that we're not able to design around, because if we eliminate the burn, the water will not have the natural runoff to the creek to the east. It would be stopped by the burn. So that is still a variance that's being requested. And then the request for the waiver of the parking lot landscape island that was in this corner has been removed as we've redesigned the plan. One of the comments that we heard a lot about the Plan Commission was stormwater management. The design of this parking lot will now sit over with the existing detention pond. Concrete storage vaults are being constructed underneath the parking lot to control the stormwater runoff from this site. It will contain this, you know, the same amount as approved by MWRD for the volume of the stormwater runoff. It will just be a different design to allow us to use this area for the parking system. The maintenance of the vault will be done by the owner. And one thing that we wanted to note was that the plan with the current restaurant as it's been constructed, and the additional parking, resulted in 96% reduction in stormwater discharge from the site from what was there with Hackneys. Hackneys had, was a concrete island with no stormwater control or stormwater management. So this is some reduces the stormwater discharge that was running off the property when it was Hackneys by 96%. This is just a kind of a cross-section of the stormwater vault. As you can see, there are inlets at the bottom that allow water to kind of naturally drain into the soil as it comes into the system. It's only to the extent that the vaults get up to about the 50% line in terms of capacity that there would be an outlet to runoff to the east into the creek, which is where the current detention pond also drains. Tree removal, which is another issue that we know is very important to the village. This plan shows the trees that are being removed. The yellow, you can tell those are dead trees. The orange are trees that are being removed. There are 41 in total that will be taken out. 24 of those are in fair or poor condition. One is in excellent condition. 16 are in good condition. The re, the reduction in the number of parking spaces from our original plan also allowed us to save three additional trees. And there will be a number of additional plantings. Our original design had about 74 plantings being added back to the design, primarily kind of along the boundaries, so that it will create a natural buffer with the neighboring properties. The total number of those are being redone as we rework the plan. Just a quick note on environmental impact. The Army Corps of Engineers has approved the plan and approved the site. The Illinois DNR has also reviewed the plan. They identified three potential species in this area. The hind-samro dragonfly, which I understand we're just on the very edge of where the flight pattern is for this dragonfly. The northern long-eared bat and the resting patch-bellied, and we'll be working with the ecological consultant to ensure that any tree work and clearing is done within the recommended guidelines for the protection of these species. Traffic, we have a full traffic study that was done. No additional curbs are being added. We think the additional parking will lessen the number of cars circling the parking lot, trying to find a spot without going to the valet, particularly on weekend nights when the restaurant is at its, you know, paviest. And reduce the number of cars coming in and out of the valet, taking cars in and off the lot. Based on the police report that was included in the traffic study, there was no identifiable relationship between accidents at the intersection of La Grange and McCarthy with the Wu's House Restaurant. So the fish shows the retaining wall, kind of a 3D schematic. So with the redesigned wall, it was originally proposed to just be a solid stone wall. It's basically designed with curves and contours, so that no section from top to bottom is more than eight feet tall. This also allows for some additional landscaping to be put into these sections to allow more of a natural buffer and maybe a little bit more of an aesthetic look for the neighbors, particularly the farm that will be able to eat at the vault. These are kind of flat ridgings where you can't see the total design. You can't really see the differentiation between the levels of the wall. But this kind of shows both the northern and the eastern sides. And then these are schematics. The top one, again, is a rendering of, if you're standing at the southeast corner of the property along La Grange Road, looking northwest, what it will look like. And then if you, for this one, if you're at the northeast from the farm perspective, looking southwest, with the wall over. We heard a lot about the impact on neighboring parcels with the Plan Commission, so we just wanted to take a few last minutes and kind of address, address that. This is just a plan from the Cook County GIS maps. Again, it just shows kind of what we started at the beginning. The total area developed is this portion. This will be the additional parking field. And then there's an additional residential lot that the Wu's own that will retain, will be not built on at this time. So the ne, the nearest neighbors are here and here, which are still a fair distance away from this parking field. And then, just to address a few of the other concerns that were raised, the initial design of the Wu's House Restaurant contained less parking than Hackneys had when operating. This is true. Hackneys had more parking on the same parking area, so to speak, because they did not have any of the perimeter and internal landscape islands that are now required by code, also part of the comprehensive plan. They also did not have, you know, any of these areas that would help with the stormwater management for the site. But by putting in these areas, naturally took out parking spaces. There was a concern that the parking should have been presented with the initial plan. We wanted to note that they, by code, the restaurants is required to have 68 parking spaces. I believe 94 spaces were put in with the original plan. So Mr. Moon believed that would be sufficient to accommodate the success of the restaurant. You know, I guess it's a good thing that he is here for more parking and has done well, and continues to do well, to look for additional parking. There was also a question if arrangements had been made with the farm to take care of parking rather than kind of construct this additional field. And there were discussions with the farm. The parking there was going to be limited to about 20 cars per night. The valet on the weekends is parking about 60 to 70 cars per night. And then the cars would need to be removed by 9:00 P.M., or I believe the farm is gated at that time, or they wanted the cars removed, so that would conflict with customers that are staying later, also with employees. If we were to put employee parking there, they would not be off work yet by 9:00 P.M. So this did not pose, it was kind of a Band-Aid solution that was being discussed, but it did not pose a permanent solution to the parking needs for the restaurant. And then the last concern was that the Wu's had not built a home next to the restaurant at the residential parcel. And we just wanted to know that this was looked at, but with the topography of the parcel, with the flood, the flood zone goes into the parcel here. There's drainage and utility, public drainage and utility easements. And then the setback line, this shows a 50-foot line. The setback line, without getting any variance, would be about 100 feet to be commensurate with the neighboring homes on the street. So it really didn't leave area for a large home to be built there. And we'd be happy to take any questions that you have on the design, that you have for any of the consultants.
I don't have any questions at this time, knowing that this is going back to the Plan Commission and that we don't have the fully redesigned plans even with the village at this time. This is just, you know, some preliminary information. Does anyone else have questions or comments?
No.
I guess I would ask anyone in the audience that they're interested in providing any input. Again, understanding that this is just preliminary data. There was a Plan Commission meeting. The applicant is responding to concerns addressed at that meeting, but that there will be a MacApp mission here. Anyone in the audience want to speak? Thank you.
All right, well, with no other questions, the only motion I would need to make here is just to move to refer the item PC 2022-02, the Wu's House Parking Lot Expansion required back to the Plan Commission for further review of the revised proposal. Second?
And that also includes a public hearing. So I have a motion and a second. Will the clerk please call the call?
Commissioner Wade?
Yes.
Commissioner Polk?
Yes.
Commissioner Loomis Walters?
Yes.
Yes, motion carries. Do we have any idea when that meeting will occur?
The October meeting is scheduled for October 20th, and we hope to have a site on the agenda. But as you've noted, we would hope to have set up revised plans for October 20th.
Confirm that, but.
And it will be October 20th.
Just information for the following. Thank you for coming.
You guys are welcome to stay, but I imagine you might have other more important things to do. Thanks for coming.
Thank you. All right. How much work's in streets and recreation for Commissioner Loomis Walters?
Thanks for letting me aside while you're down here. I just have one item on the agenda. It's an extra invoice from Lindahl Brothers for the captain parking lot. At the May 23, 2022 village council meeting, approval was given for the proposal of Lindahl Brothers to pave the captain parking lot. The work was done in early September while removing the existing three inches of asphalt, and the proposal became apparent that the asphalt left was in poor shape and crumbling. Rather than try to pave over the old asphalt, Public Works authorized removing this material, which results in using more asphalt to pave the lot. Rather than three inches of material being put down, four to four-and-a-half inches of material was used. Based on tickets for materials used on this project, Lindahl used additional 189 tons of asphalt to properly pave the lot, which gives us an invoice of $11,340. Same day, have any questions? Now I'd like to make a motion to approve the payment of the Lindahl invoice in the amount of $11,340 for extra asphalt placed in the captain parking lot.
Second?
Hearing a motion and a second, will the clerk please call the call?
Yes, Commissioner Loomis Walters?
Yes.
Commissioner Wade?
Yes.
Commissioner Polk?
Yep.
Yes, motion carries.
And that is all I have, other than to say thank you to all the staff for the work at Hoddington Park. I unfortunately could not, hey, there was the first one I missed. It was my first parents' weekend at my daughter's college. So I was very sad to miss, but heard it was fantastic, and I'm sure you all will talk about it, so.
Yeah, it was a great event, I have to say. The parade was great. All the others were wonderful. Entertainment was fantastic. We had a great crowd on both nights. And the beer tent, beer, wine, and other spirits tent was quite busy. A lot of work, again, the staff works really hard at that. And that's, that's hard work, I will tell you. Working that beer tent. Thanks to Commissioner Polk for handling all the announcements. You did a wonderful job, as always. Commissioner Wade, you, I, I loved the tractor and the parade. That was so awesome. That was so awesome.
It was good, it was good. I'd be getting back right away, but it was nice.
Yeah.
You avoided the opportunity to do something on your land. I had to.
I had to go back to the neighbors to charge them by the hour.
Good. How many comments do you have, Commissioner Polk?
Thank you, Mayor. We'll start with the police activity report from the 11th of September through the 25th of October, the year of our own 2022. Seventeen hundred and forty-five calls for service and additional fifteen citizen assists, took thirteen case reports and unfortunately fourteen accident reports. Fortunately, didn't arrest anybody nor did we impound any vehicles. Made fifty-two traffic stops with seventeen movement violations, an additional nine adjudication tickets and twenty-nine speeding tickets. So that's what the Payless Park Police Department's been up to for the last couple of weeks. And then I just have a couple of announcements in no particular order. It's fall, you may have noticed, particularly if we get crossed around that, you'll notice that. I want to remind people that we are getting into the rut of the deer season. I love the building of Payless Park. You get to talk about all sorts of stuff that you wouldn't talk about, let's just say, in Burbank. Nothing wrong with Burbank, London, one for the town. So deer are feeding heavily, they're moving into their rut. This is our highest season for a risk of occurrence with a car versus deer. It'll peak around November or so. So be careful out there. You may have noticed, we don't have a lot of street lights and the deer like to wander. They are not, they're not afraid to go and eat whatever is left in any of these yard. So particularly in the mornings, early morning, five to eight, and particularly in the evening, seven to ten. So just be careful out there. People who've been on here for a while know that you likely to encounter a deer in multiple places in the park and it's dark out there. So another reason not to speed down people's side streets. Just be attentive. And if you encounter a deer, it's best to make a very quick decision. But that decision should not include swerving because most of the serious accidents we see is because someone swerved on the road and they either hit an oncoming car, which typically does more damage to you than the deer does, or they run off the road and strike a very immobile object, which is generally a nice big oak tree. So again, if you're eminently going to collide with the deer, take a deep breath and try and slow down, but try not to swerve the car because you're likely to cause more damage to either your vehicle or yourself. And again, if you've got an issue or you need help, please don't be afraid to call 911. We'll come out and do whatever we can do in order to be able to extricate you from your particular situation. Also, we'd like to talk a little bit about the fact that fall is a busy time for people trying to run particularly house repairs or cleanup or those kinds of scams, particularly for our older citizens. These people are very good at what they do, which is generally separate you from your money without any real work being done. They tend to do what we call a walk-up solicitation. So they'll walk up, knock on the door, tell you that they've been working down the road or that one of your neighbors said that you might be looking for gutter cleaning or something like that. And again, there's a little balance here. And that, that may be true, most of the time it's not. If they are working in the village, they need to be licensed inside the village. So an easy way to shun them sometimes is to ask to see their license. If they can't provide you a license, I wouldn't provide them with any more time of day. They say typically that they notice that there's a problem with your house. That can alarm people, but the likelihood that they actually noticed a problem with your house other than the fact that you were standing outside of it is pretty low. They'll tend to ask for cash or a check. They don't like taking credit cards. And then they'll make the, what I call the fluff promises. You know, we've got excellent reviews on Google. We can undercut anybody's price by thirty percent. We can start this afternoon. It will only take us today to finish the job. And typically in these sorts of bruises, once you've given them some money, you're never going to see them again. So again, take a moment. If you ever had any questions, you can always call 911. Someone will come out and help you deal with the issue. If you have time, you can check to see if they have a website. Most of these people do not have their own website. So just some thoughts about someone walking up to you and offering to seal coat your driveway, clean your gutters, fix that loose shingle that's on the roof, do some concrete repairs, stuff like that. And I certainly wouldn't let them into my home because that's the beginning of a nice ruse burglary where someone gains an opportunity to come into your house and then you go back in your house and you find out that the silverware's in the pot. Chief Miller, anything you care to add?
Nothing, Commissioner.
I do want to take a moment, this just in, and thank the Women's Club for two very generous donations, both to the Payless Park Police Department through the foundation as well as to the cadet program. They were totally unexpected and they are incredibly appreciated. So thank you to the Women's Club. And that concludes the fire report.
Thank you, Commissioner. Council finances report, Commissioner Reed is not with us this evening, so and I have no report, so clerk, you're going, you have it?
Yes, I do. Yay! Election Day is Tuesday, November 8th. We will elect a governor, a senator, seventeen representatives in the House, the Attorney General, the Secretary of State, the Treasurer and Comptroller. The polls will be open from 6:00 A.M. to 7:00 P.M. You can fill out a mail ballot application online to vote by mail or vote in person before election, starting on September the 29th. Go to cookcountclerk.com forward slash elections for all voting information. So with that many options, there's no reason not to vote.
Thanks.
Manager of the evening is not here this evening, so I'll go to my one major announcement.
Vanna, nice job!
Oh, my!
For those that may not know, McCord House is a wild preserve, eighteen thirty-four farmhouse in Payless Park, constructed by Tony McCord after he obtained the land in eighteen thirty-four. The home stayed in the original family for well over one hundred years. Today, this home was used as a focal point for artists in the Dallas community. In the early twentieth century, Payless Park was considered an artist, artist community. So it is fitting that this home now serves as a McCord Gallery and Cultural Center. This pavement for the arts holds classes and events that promote the fine arts, not only in this community, but in the region. To continue this mission, the McCord Gallery and Cultural Center is holding its biggest fundraiser of the year at Cod Hill Country Club on Saturday, November 8th. I would like to invite McCord Gallery and Cultural Center's Safari, Safari Crew Chair, Arlie and Carol Fosinski to share more information on this upcoming event.
I like to sware it, Ben. You guys can go with Safari there.
It's just safe, five times in a row.
I obviously have a little problem.
So as Mayor Mahoney just mentioned, the McCord Gallery's been around for a while now and we haven't had our annual fundraiser now for a couple of years because of COVID, so we're happy to be back with a big fun gala party. And I just wanted to just little share some of the things that are coming up in McCord. This Friday, we currently have an exhibit of the Illinois Watercolor Society.
You're good.
You're good, okay. The Illinois Watercolor Society, and then this Friday is a closing reception from 6:00 to 8:00 P.M. It's free and open to the public, so please come enjoy the exhibit, have a glass of wine. We always have a great turnout for that. Next month is our annual trunk or treat event, so bring your children in costumes and get some free treats. This will be Saturday, October 15th, also free to the public from noon to 2:00 P.M. In McCord's parking lot. In November, our holiday shop starts off with handcrafted, one-of-a-kind gifts. We're having a kickoff party November 18th from sixty-eight with holiday music and again, free to the public and of course, we'll have some wine there.
Good, there's a theme here.
There's a lot of art and wine going on in McCord. McCord also provides a wonderful outreach program to the residential park lawn, offering art classes twice a week to the developmentally disabled. We also provide private art classes to people living with Alzheimer's. McCord is a nonprofit 501(c)(3), so our fundraiser, sponsorships and donations are tax deductible. We survive with many dedicated volunteers, our board members, a small staff, and supported by many generous donors in the community. We'd like to thank Mayor Mahoney and the village staff for all their support over the years. And I'm leaving some details here of some of these upcoming events I just mentioned, so feel free to pick anything up. And I'm going to turn it over to my co-chair, Arlie.
Thank you, Carol. And thank you, Mayor Mahoney, and all that's here. You're wonderful. Anyway, this is a very large poster, a little more visual. But we are so happy to present this new fundraiser this year because like Carol said, we haven't had one in a couple of years and we desperately need this to keep our doors open. It's a beautiful addition to Payless Park. There's nothing like that around here and people can feel safe. They have some culture right in their own area, which is wonderful. Anyway, the event is like Mayor said, November 5th. It's time to get wild, not too wild because we don't want. Yes. Exactly, but anyway.
We have resources to deal with that.
Okay, good to hear. But it's a wonderful event and it's going to be a lot of fun. And it includes, it's our best port to adventure. And for the price of a hundred and twenty-five dollars, it's very well worth it. There's a full, wonderful dinner, full premium bar, here we go. And wonderful entertainment by Fantasia. And it's a full group of music and it's at Cod Hill Country Club. And they are also offering a golf package. We're right on Doug's Drift, so that'll be on our live auction. So, and these golfers out here. And we are going to have rafts, of course, and silent and live auctions with very many different prices. So I just hope all the committee or all your council members will get the word out also and anyone that is listening to do so too. It's, it's wonderful and we would appreciate any support. And there's still time for donations and sponsorship, so don't forget, if anybody is inclined, we appreciate it. And thank you so much, Vanna, thank you, Mayor.
Also, thank you guys for coming in, we're lucky, looking forward to it.
All right, thank you.
With a lot of enthusiasm.
Nice job on the parade, folks.
That was good, that was amazing, Neely's.
Very nice. Amanda, you rock.
And Benton House, and they donated the cheap.
Don't, I'm gonna leave somebody out. Thank you, Ms. Benton House.
I don't think I have any other announcements. Anyone in the audience like to address the council? I would seek a motion for a change.
So moved?
Hearing a motion, second, will the clerk please call the roll?
Yep.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Yes, motion carries. Thank you all and good evening.
Be safe out there.